I've got to get my recorder.
Oh, okay.
What did you have to record? I mean, who left the dinner? Just while we were going in.
Just that I had a pair of taffy pants and a blue blazer. Just like we all decided we had, you know. And it's just because there's only one choice for men.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, June 16th Board of Selectments meeting together. We have a poll hearing relative to Horizon and N-Star for Chase Road East, Pre-Town. We also have one relative to N-Star and Horizon for Gray Road as well. Tonight, we'll be talking to Diane Lalas regarding the retiree Part B Medicare and Lockbox. We have some issues with that now. And then, we will be headed to our special town meeting and our annual town meeting. Are you taking the meetings?
Yes, I am.
I knew we wouldn't have it any other way.
That's right.
Right.
You bet it.
Okay. Anybody here?
We're also taking it by camera.
Yeah. Our lovely assistant over there. Anybody here have anything for public discussion? Okay, very nice. At 6:05, a little late, but I'm here. Anybody here from Horizon, N-Star for placing of a new poll 15/6 PB and to relocate poll 1534 on Chase Road East, Pre-Town? And Ally, have all the butters been notified?
Yes.
Do you have your green cards?
Yes, I do. I'm here for Horizon.
Hello.
The polls are necessary for the solar farm that's going in. They're doing some upgrading. There'll be some more cables going on to the polls, so they need to add some polls. For proper guiding.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Pick a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Ally, do you have the green cards that have all the butters been notified for the placing of the new polls for the second hearing?
They have not been notified, all of them, no.
Okay. Then I will ask the board to continue this poll hearing to the next meeting, which is on Monday, July 14th.
Is that going to hold you guys up?
I don't know. But they do have to be approved before the committee's instructions.
Right. Not all the butters were notified, so...
I have to know. Let powers of P. of Horizon know what happened and the date of reschedule.
Okay. Have them, when you talk to Ally, if the 14th or whoever talks to the administrative system, if the 14th is not good enough, if you need to move that up a little bit, we would be more than willing to hold a meeting earlier if necessary.
All right.
But we like to vacation if, you know, we must do.
Get this over to them tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. Diane?
Do you need to take a vote to continue that hearing?
Sure. Do you have a motion to continue? Did I start that and then went in another direction? Yeah, that happens. I'm so glad you're here, Mike. That's because you cut me off, right? Okay. Do I have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She'll let us know. You guys don't have a contact, right? If you have a little early. I don't want to pull that up, but unfortunately, that is out of this house. All right, Diane, you're on. You can take that chair, of course, if you want to, too.
I'm proud of Diane. Some information on Medicare Part B, on the retirees. It's a list of retirees. There's the article in which we adopted Chapter 32, Section 18. A copy of the chapter that we adopted. The opinion from Joe Fair, the attorney's opinion, Joe Fair on the assessment of the penalty. And a draft letter requesting penalty waiver for the retirees being assessed a penalty. You should have received a copy of the schedule. I quoted that here two weeks ago, which we got to the current rates for these individuals. The town rate, the employee rate, the new rates, and the penalty assessment, which to date is approximately 1206.50 per month. We adopted the article, June 11th, 2008. And it discusses Medicare extension mandatory transfer of retirees, in which it's confirmed the attorney's opinion that if the individual retirees did not file in a timely manner, that the onus is on the town to pay the penalty. We assisted all of the individuals in question in filling out requests for waivers, at least for the first time. And there have only been two denials. No one has responded. No one else has responded yet. And my contact at Social Security has said that some of them will not be notified till after July 1st until it actually takes effect. So, so that's the penalty thus far, is 1206 a month. One of the things we have to determine is how we're going to reimburse the individuals. We haven't given up filing for appeals. It was suggested by at least one individual at Social Security that we send a letter on behalf of the retirees, and that's the last page, just a draft, asking for a waiver based on the fact that the individuals were not properly notified at the time in question. It's a win-win for us because either way, if they don't get waived, the town has to look at the penalty.
I'll open it to the board for some questions.
How do you vote? People retiring, they have certain responsibilities themselves. Are they not? Am I wrong about this? When you turn 65, you're going to tell Medicare you're 60 and apply for it. In some cases, it appears they didn't because they were playing it. Now, as the town, we're saying it's our fault because, what, what? Didn't put a company?
That's in the law. That's the way the law is assessed. Now, one of the, and that's, if you read my letter, one of the, that's why I phrase it the way I did, because there's been a lot of changes. There's been changes in health insurance. There's been changes, you know, Social Security. And some of the wording I got from my contact at Social Security said maybe worded that way. Either way, if we don't file this, we're paying the penalty.
So, wouldn't we...
We got to see who was wrong at the time.
Wouldn't we approve this letter or not? We're going to pay the penalty.
We're going to pay the penalty. If we send this letter, we have a chance of them waiving. We're helping them out by doing that, but we're helping ourselves as well, because either way, the onus is on, on the town to pay.
So, we were put in this position because they never really, over a period of time...
Well, you know, I have one letter, I didn't bring it, as an example. I have one letter in the office on someone's file. It's an email that my predecessor made a copy of. And the email says, it's from the agent, stating that this particular couple not have to file. There was extenuating circumstances, but they were still told that they did not have to file. Now, they're told they have to file.
So, Social Security didn't notice?
No.
Who gave you one?
The letter came from our agent stating that they...
When you say agent, who are you talking about?
My...
Oh, for my own?
It's an email that was kept on file for these particular individuals, since we've come through everything, that stated that they did not have to file at that time. Every single one of them has come in and said to us, we were told we didn't have to file. We didn't have to file. Most of these individuals are spouses, and they were entitled to piggyback. And the question that comes up is that they didn't know that they could...
Piggyback.
Well, sorry. Well, they were able to take the benefit as a result to their spouse.
Okay.
Even though they weren't Medicare eligible.
Okay.
So, there's been a lot of changes, and nobody is taking, you know, any blame for whatever. But the law says that if we didn't follow through, the town didn't follow through and make sure that these people went and transferred onto Medicare Part B, Part A, Part B, that the onus is on the town to pay the penalty.
The town has experienced significant savings by having individuals leave a individual plan to go on to Medicare and pay the penalty. To pick up the penalty is a significant savings.
Yeah, that's on the spreadsheet as well.
Well, I understand that. It's a quality of the law.
Okay. So, the current rate, which was $10,000 a year, being paid by the town, the new rate, and this is just for these individuals, this is not everyone, because the rates are all anybody who's, you know...
Right now, this spreadsheet...
This is retirees.
Excuse me. Right now, this spreadsheet contains all the individuals that have...
Potentially, yeah. Potentially could have...
Well, they have them now, and the fact that they're appealing it could negate some of those people.
Absolutely. So, the penalty itself is 12, as I said, 1206.50 a month right now, for the ones who come back. Some are pretty hefty, and they've been paying them for a long time. The new employee held insurance rate has gone from 10,000 for these people, 10,800 to 5,200. So, even with paying the assessment, we're being over $3,000 a month right now. Not that you should...
For how long, Diane, the $3,000 a month? Till they say the penalty's paid?
The penalty is forever.
Till they pass away, then?
Yes, yes, forever.
Unless Social Security waives it through the appeal process.
That's why I was very gentle in how I put it, by putting the onus on us, just because that's the only way. They're not allowing the, they're not allowing the retirees to say, hey, I just didn't know it. I just didn't know.
But are they allowing them to say, we were told?
That's what, that's what was suggested to us. Now, whether that's what it worked out, there's several levels of appeals. We've gone through the first one.
There's two additional ones.
Yes. So, you know, the one level is internal. If there's a law judge, there's two appeal processes. Now, we're on the second level. For some, some of them haven't even gotten a DNI to yet. They've gotten a bill with the penalty assessment.
They had initial decision, put the penalty on. Then they had a reconsideration. That's what you applied, that they applied for. The next level would be, if I remember the way, would be an administrative law judge. And then, after that, it goes to the appeals cops in Washington, but it usually gets taken care of at the administrative law judge. I think the letter that you put together gives, raises the question with Social Security that, hey, these people could have been given misinformation. Now, certainly, people at one point in time may not have been entitled to Medicare, that all of a sudden their spouse reties and they're entitled. Now, they become entitled, because now they're going to get a spouse's benefit. Or they may not even be entitled to a benefit.
A lot of them, these, most of these people are spouses.
Right.
They did not, they were eligible.
Look, I can tell you, in my own case, I've never worked under Social Security, and I've worked for the Fed. I'm entitled to Medicare on my wife's account, so I had to apply it under my wife's account. That's just the way the federal law works. So, you know, certainly, these people, it's not their fault that they got into this.
I've heard this, and I said, like I said, I have evidence from our agent that they were told they didn't have to file. I believe these people were told they didn't have to file.
Had we not accepted that in 2008, we wouldn't be talking about this, because we wouldn't have forced these people into Medicare.
But it's still the savings for the town.
Oh, it's a tremendous...
Yeah.
Diane, what do you think our exposure is here per month?
1,200. It's $1,200 a month.
Right.
Or until late, perhaps.
So, we got it.
For each person?
No.
No.
Total is 1,200 a month. For each 10 people.
See, that column right there, see where it says, where it says 120% penalty, they're still, they're still obligated to pay the 104.90. The assessment on the penalty is 10% per year. So, some of these people are paying 120%. That means they should have filed 12 years ago.
Well, I get the penalty in time. I was just confused about the numbers.
Yeah, no.
3,000...
No, it's 1206 a month.
We got all those 6 a month.
Right now, I mean...
And how much should be saved on people like you?
Super lot of them. Well, that's it. No, that was Chase Plan.
Well, the rate almost dropped in half. The town's share almost dropped in half.
All right. At this point, do you have any more questions? So, when I look at this, I look at this, I'm not going to pretend that I know a lot of, about Medicare or health insurance. That's why I'm the guru in that area. But I'm, I'll look at three things. Do we have to do it? What Joe Fair said? And what is our obligation to make this right? So, for those three reasons, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Well, I'm the guru, because I worked for Social Security for 37 years.
Okay.
I write the motion that we adopt Diane's letter, that thinks it's a very reasonable letter, to go along with any appeals that are filed by the individual to help the town appeal. Because the individuals have to file appeals with Social Security, as you well know.
The other, the, what? Sorry.
And that, we pay the penalty once the appeals have been exhausted. Okay? So, in other words, it puts, my motion is to make sure that the people file the three levels of appeals, or at least go to the administrative law judge. If it's denied, the administrative law judge, fine, pay that penalty, because there's a good chance that the penalty could be reversed by the administrative law judge.
The other thing that we have to...
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Diane.
The other thing that we have to be concerned with is how we're going to reimburse these people. That's going to be, at first, I was told that we would be able to set, you know, payment plan with the federal government. I have to have 20 employees. We don't. So, we have to determine how we're going to reimburse them when this takes place. As of July 1st, this begins. So...
Well, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. I would think that once these appeals are exhausted, and we have, for a figure, we'll just reimburse the people. We could reimburse them maybe every four, four months, you know, three times a year.
Every quarter?
Every quarter, or every, four times a year. Certainly, they're paying it now, and it's being deducted from the Social Security.
Do you have, you're going to be working on a figure for that as well, too?
Two. That's the 1206 right now.
Oh, that's just the 1206?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Yeah.
Individual, we got them broken down individually, what we owe them, but that's the total for all of them thus far. That's the total.
A month. Three months, that's it.
So, you're asking how, how you're going to take the 1206 and go back and pay them? Is that what you're asking?
We got to determine how we're going to reimburse the penalty assessment. We were hoping we would be billed for the assessment as a record.
By Social Security?
By Social Security.
I don't think, I don't think we'd do that.
You had to have at least 20 individuals in order to do it that way.
So, this will be made in any meeting tomorrow of the insurance association board. Wonderful thing. One less meeting.
All right. Lockbox, we got to go quick here.
Okay.
All right.
Well, it's working well. The details from our first commitment of excise reflected 50%. The asset and all of that is that the bank receives the money, the town receives the money on the same day it's deposited. All the accounts are uploaded, alleviates the employees to have to post payments. If there's a hundred payments or 200 payments that are received, basically, they upload up the file and post. So, going forward, I mean, you know, there's always some little things that you have to work out, but it's efficient. We save time. We've been able to write off, almost do the research, to write off over 30 years about standard receiving posts on excise tax in the last few months. We're just awaiting for the assessments to complete their end of it. It's allowed me to work on tax, tax title with these ladies, and...
But you're still taking payments at the window?
Absolutely.
Okay, you're not turning anybody away, and you're still...
No one does that.
All right. And when the payment is made, you turn that over to Lockbox, or do you, how does that, how do you go?
No, all the payments are made in-house, and you know, you raised that, about how your check takes, that's, that's one thing that we have to work on. When it's a heavy tax time, I started to go to the bank myself, because we have two pickups, pickups Tuesday and Thursday, that are done again at the grant of the banker. I brought Denise with me, in case you had any questions. She's the one who helped me implement the Lockbox, Bristol County savings. The advantage is, they pick up Tuesdays and Thursdays. However, if a payment is made Thursday afternoon over the counter, it gets posted either that afternoon or the next morning. We don't have a pickup till Tuesday.
Right.
That money doesn't get deposited till Wednesday. It's not going to hit the individual's bank for only five days.
That's fine. I'm not, I'm worried that you're going to take all the checks and mail them all up to Lockbox.
No.
So, that's something I don't want personally.
What we, what we did the last time, it wasn't counterpayment. It was mail payments, for instance. We could have benefited greatly and saved maybe six hours of labor. We received 900 bills from one of our warehouses in town. They posted all those. Those could have been scanned by Lockbox, even though they were received in-house, and that money could have been uploaded without our staff having to get involved in them. They were cleaning, you know, especially motor vehicle, motor vehicle is cleaning their cup. It's not like you have prior years that you have to deal with or anything else. So, it's a big time saver. We had 12,000 bills. They would have gotten behind in the past when it came to the last few days, because they, because of, you know, how many people pay at the last minute. When all was said and done, even with not sending the mail, they took in 50% of the work, and that money was posted in, those checks were deposited that same day.
Who took in 50%? Lockbox.
Lockbox. Even though, you know, there's people that, you know, drop it in the box still, because they don't like the address, it's, that all the time, they become accustomed to it.
That was for, that was for the personal property?
That was, that was for motor vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
We're about to do real estate and personal property.
We made the real estate? We haven't made that decision.
Well, the bills are about to go out next week. The scan line is on.
You haven't gone to the board to talk about this?
Well, I'm here.
What is the cost of Lockbox?
There is no cost. She's right here.
There, there's no cost?
No, there is none.
Is there a minimum balance?
Ah, yes.
How much is the minimum balance?
The minimum balance is 300,000 in the depository account, but that's also earning interest. It's not like it's not earning interest.
What's the interest rate?
.05 on the depository.
So, there is a minimum, so there is a cost. The cost is done through flow?
Correct.
We've never gone, we've never gone down to 300,000, not in the whole year that I've been here. We've always had over $2 million.
In that bank?
Moving the money from money market, you know, she's been following protocol, not just keeping it in a depository earning .05. So...
So, in other words, it has to be 300,000 within your bank, not within that .05 account?
Correct.
So, what are the other accounts earning?
A money market account, which earns .25. Interest rates are not good right now. Basically, that's why we...
.5?
.25.
And how much is the flow account?
.05.
05, okay.
So, basically, with interest rates as low as they are in this type of environment, I'm sure, as you know, even in your personal accounts, it's beneficiary for treasury collectors to be using services to cover, you know, the fees that would have been, you know, costly, which are not, because deposits are flowing through. You're not going to earn much more interest anyway elsewhere. So, that's why Bristol County has offered this.
Okay.
What are we here for, to decide now?
Well, I'm going to entertain a motion from the board to continue with Lockbox for real estate and personal property, or if real estate and personal property...
I think at this point, when we talk about it, we should do that with a particular timeframe to give the rule, to think about it, discuss it. When we do that, can we approve for six months or so? Will we get more handle on, on when this is coming down, and then extend it if we want to?
No.
If that doesn't work, tell me.
One thing with the Lockbox service, too, is your mail comes in once a day. With Lockbox, twice a day, the mail is picked up. That's why it goes to that boss in Lockbox. So, that money is moved twice a day to be able to deposit those funds in that day. So, obviously, being able to manage your cash flow, manage your money, you know, better than waiting, stamping every check, putting it on a deposit slip, going to the bank, all of those things.
I get, I get the benefits.
Okay.
If we reach a point where we decide, you know, Lockbox isn't working for us, is there a penalty if we decide not to want to do this?
Two weeks, you need to notify us to withdraw.
What is your concern at this point? Well, wait, you have a motion. Do I have a second?
Who made the motion? Did you make it?
Yeah.
Who made it?
I'm here to make the motion.
No.
I'm sure.
There's no motion. I, I have a couple more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
My concern is that for a, a good amount of time, every time you mention Lockbox to me, I actually come in and present it to the board of selection. And you come in here after the bills are already prepared. That's my issue.
You did, you did not say, and I, I asked town administrator...
Are you saying I didn't ask it?
No, there was never a question of asking me. If that was my...
I disagree.
If that was...
Vehemently, I disagree.
If that was my, if that was my understanding, I would have been here. There was no other concern, there was no concern as far as I understood, other than the fact that it was a cost involved. And I did address it with the town administrator, just a...
Two weeks ago, on the phone, you called me, and I said to you, you need to present it to the board of selection as soon as possible. You're telling me I never said that? I'm sorry.
We've already implemented Lockbox.
You implemented Lockbox not for motor vehicle, not for anything else?
I think that's where the confusion came in, is because when we first talked to you about, when we first talked to you about it, you said it was just for one thing. And, and we asked you, is this the only thing it's here for? And you said yes, and, you know, that conversation took place. And here's my, my thing, and I really, Diane, don't know where the board's going to go on this, okay? We're here all the time. We have meetings all the time. If you ever want to go on the agenda to talk about something, or, we can't make decisions individually, we have to make them as a board, okay? That's why you're here tonight. That's why we have these things on the agenda. That being said, I get that Lockbox is one of those things you have to get used to. I think the, the rub here is that you didn't tell us about it. You just did it. And now, your expect, your expectations are is that we're going to continue to do it. I think that's where, that's where the rub is. I, I know these guys. I've worked with them for a while. I get it, okay? I get the wheels are in...
I understand that as well, that was in this communication.
I get the wheels...
However, I'm, I'm asking you to look at it as, as in what's in the best interest of town.
I, I, okay, I'm going to get there.
Not me personally.
I'm going to get there. I understand that there are some benefits to having Lockbox. Convenience, I know it's something that the town's got to get used to, for townspeople have to get used to. I get that. I get the money's getting there quicker. I get all of that. You can't go, and I'm not saying this in a derogatory sense, you can't go back door and do things and then come to the board and say, can you approve this? It doesn't work like that.
I did not feel as though I was.
I, I do, but I'm, but that being said, I'm not opposed to Lockbox, I'm opposed to the way you did it.
I'd like to ask a question for the panel. When was the decision made to go Lockbox for everything?
I believe it was February...
Lockbox for everything? Thank you. Thank you.
It was, it was never my understanding, you said that it was just for that. When we went to test for Lockbox, it was on everything. We had to test everything. Okay. But it's not about, I, you know, it's up to you whether you want to continue or not.
All right. Do I have any motions on, from the board, to continue the Lockbox or for the real estate and personal property? I have no motions.
I have another question. What happens with the bills that we have already?
The bills, we have samples right now.
The bills have been printed?
I believe they haven't been printed. We have, we're reviewing samples right now. I believe that I have to produce another file and have them take the scan line off.
Here's the thing, guys...
I thought you just said earlier that the bills are ready to go out.
The bills are ready to go out, isn't it? We produced the file, we're reviewing samples, but that doesn't mean we can't produce another file and we don't have to scan them.
I wanted to, can I, can I ask you guys to do this for a sec? Can we take the personality out of it?
It has nothing to do with personality.
And, and the way it came down, I know.
It has to do with what's been told to us in the past.
Right. That will, that will be taken care of.
In that case, I'll make a motion to go ahead with Lockbox for the best interest of the town to pay the penalty.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. That's the only thing I want to do. I have that on my phone. All right. Yeah, we do. We have to, all right. Anything else? My outside?
Your outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have a new motion to go on to a new discussion session.
So move.
For, for reason of, can you read that for me?
Number two. Number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
All right. I have a motion to...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Yes.
All right. And...
Okay. Uh, we, we, the applications, uh, for the position of building commissioner, we went back because the applications were not stale, they were less than four, in fact, they were less than 10 months old. We threw the application, we went back to our top three people, uh, in the rotation that classified the applications, and the top individual, Scott Barbado, is a building commissioner with 15 years' experience. And I would, he meets all our criteria, and I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Scott Barbado as the building commissioner of town, effective for July 8th.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, through the personnel chair, I'd like to make a motion, or somebody needs to make a motion, to reaffirm the vote taken on Janice Boucher as town accountant as per, per, um, contract.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
No, for the votes second, is this a ratification of the extension of the contract?
Yeah. Yeah, we already voted on, but we voted on executive, so I want to, yeah.
Thank you. You want to clarify?
Right. And I, I did not vote, I abstained from voting, and I will continue to do so. Okay?
I have one other from personnel. This is the recent note of a request that was made by...
Who's handling it?
Sorry, go ahead, please.
I've got a question. At the meeting on Friday, we didn't, we didn't even discuss where the, where the money was coming for the two, two meetings. I assume that the special will be free cash unless otherwise specified, and the annual would be taxation.
Unless otherwise specified.
Unless otherwise specified.
Correct.
Correct, Mondo.
Okay. You had a, this is the recent mission, recent mission of a request that was made May 14th by the treasurer, Diane Wallace. I am respectfully requesting to carry out three vaca, to carry over three vacation days from this year forward.
I'll make a motion to approve, and she has to use that, those days by November 30th.
I'm good with that. I'll second it.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Yeah, what's...
This is a law, right?
Um, I have a meeting.
This is a law.
So, yeah. And then, you guys...
You have to discuss it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but nobody knows what we're talking about, yeah.
No, go ahead. Jackie's father passed away, so if anyone can attend, do you want them to...
She wants to know if anyone can attend.
Or do you want them to, can they, can anyone in town hall attend?
Are you talking about the town employees that work for the town hall?
Yeah.
Can they go on company time?
Yeah, or do you want them to take like a vacation now?
That's what the question is. So what you want to do with the employees that work in the town hall, does anybody...
You shut it down. You can't shut it down.
No.
Somebody has to cover it.
How about her office specifically?
Her...
For Diane to go? I have no real problem with that. I, I actually don't have any problem with, as long as we have the town hall, there's some coverage in the town hall, you know?
As long as, at least the office is open?
Yeah, we do, yeah, we can do that. What do you think?
Um, do you want them to use vacation time or, or you're just going to let them? Because then it opens up...
Well, my policy, where, when I was the manager, was that if you want to go, and you truly want to go, you take vacation time. That's my policy, where I, where I was the manager.
That's, would be my policy as well. Vacation time only, right? Vacation or personal?
Oh, personal time.
Or personal time.
And then you know the people that truly want to go. Does that click with you? You need a motion?
Do you want to make a motion, you can, we don't really...
Shut the policy? Okay, we're good.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. You guys ready to begin?
Motion made.
No, we're just going country.
We're recess until the close, uh, to close the town meeting.
Oh, okay, we stay.
We don't do anything.
All right. We're heading to the town, the special town meeting, and then the end. Here we go.